The new store. This is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Yeah, item number three. Um, mayors address the council members. Uh, you know, I had a few bad mayor weeks there. And one of the things was, uh, sometimes when, just like what just happened now, we have some cross talk or we have some people that aren't speaking clearly so the public can hear it. Uh, I was thinking about pushing, uh, Robert's rules a little bit further so that, uh, everybody needs to direct their, um, comments through the chair before they're recognized to speak. They need to identify themselves and then they need to speak clearly so that the public can care what's being said. Um, I was getting a little bit tired of people speaking when they're trying to make motions and, uh, uh, being disruptive during the meeting. So I wanted to try to like give us a little bit more focus. But I also think that since we haven't done this in the past, that it might be cumbersome. So I don't know that I necessarily want to adopt this policy tonight or maybe see how the next couple of council meetings go. But I do want to remind everybody that we're in a public meeting. So if you're speaking and, and people can't hear what you're saying, then that's a problem. So please speak, enunciate, let the public know what you're, uh, thinking. Because that's what you were elected to be here for is, um, a voice for the people. Uh, does anyone have any questions about that? No, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to American Legal Publishing. Um, I was able, this was another resource that I dropped at from the land conference. Um, American Legal gave us a 20-page, um, uh, proposal so that they could go through our ordinance book page by page and clean up all of the stuff that isn't relevant or doesn't need to be there anymore. Um, and I'm sure that they consult with us, you know, like through the process. Uh, they said the project usually takes seven to nine months. Um, and then the original quote, uh, what said that it costs about $20 a page? And our book is about 300 pages long. So we're looking at, uh, 7100 bucks is what they came back for their proposal to go through our ordinance book and clean it all up. And then there's a page in there that shows all of different communities in Wyoming. Uh, let's see if I can find it. Uh, that they've been working with.
Page seven.
Page seven. Thank you. Yeah. So I mean, like, some of these towns that are smaller than us actually have more pages on their ordinance book. There's a couple of them that, one of them, I think, uh, it was a small town that's like a fraction of our size had like 400 pages on their ordinance book. So they look pretty busy in those little towns. But, um, yeah, this is, uh, something that I kind of ran on as a mayor is that I wanted to like look at our ordinance book and try to clean it up and get rid of things that are unenforceable or that we just simply don't enforce. And then try to go through the process and make sure that we get the book cleaned up. So we don't have to make a decision on this tonight. Everybody can kind of ponder. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I was gonna ask, uh, each of the things are cleaned up though. Don't we have to pass as an ordinance?
Yes, but you, what they generally do is they, they put out a notice and then they do, it's called a joint edit. And they've been doing that in the legislature for, you know, I don't know how long it was. The reason for that is is that if you had to re-edit every single ordinance you have at your city council meeting, it'd be a good two, three day endeavor.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So council, if you want to take the proposal, own and look at it, and then maybe we can get it on the, the agenda for next meeting or a meeting after. It's, uh, it's something that could be great if we could get done. But we've done this long without taking care of it. So a few more meetings while everybody looks at the proposal and kind of ponder. It's probably not gonna break anything. Does anybody have any questions about American Legal Publishing? Any questions? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to item number five. W C D A, Councilman Glass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want an attention, well, I didn't go anywhere. I stayed at my kitchen table and by Zoom, I attended a four-hour, uh, seminar for the W C D A. It was run by Mr. Scott Hoversland. He's the executive director. Uh, the W C D A stands for Wyoming Community Development Authority. And they have a marvelous website and I encourage each of you to go to it because they, they have these little maps of Wyoming and it shows all of, all the counties. And if they're talking about, uh, population increase, uh, then you can click on Western County. I see what the population increase will be from 19, uh, from 2022 all the way up to 2040. And they've, they've done a survey and seen how all this is going to act and how much impact the housing will be. This, it all comes down to housing. Their main job is to, uh, help right now. They're kind of focused on low-income housing. And they do provide, uh, loans, uh, no, in some cases, no interest loans for down payments for certain people. But they want to move up and what they're, they're calling it the workforce level loans. And instead of being just curious or trying to focus on the low-income housing, they're wanting to move up a step. And some of these families that, that work hard every day and they go to work every day and they still can't afford a decent house. And as an example, the house, the, uh, housing increases have increased. The prices increased about 43%. And overall in Wyoming, the wages have increased about 16%. And they're bringing that forward to the legislature. This last section, uh, the W C D A, along with their sponsors, brought four different pieces of legislation to our legislature. Not one of them passed. Two of them died in committee, never made it to the floor. And the other two, uh, didn't make it, uh, you know, through the Senate or the, or the House. Now, and that is to, like I say, move up to these other levels. And, and, cause I, I know there's people out there that'd love to have a home and they're working hard and they're, they just don't have the funding. And that's the number one problem. 73% of the people in the survey, uh, and they're talking to bankers and businessmen all throughout Wyoming, uh, 73% say that the major problem in housing in Wyoming is climate. And it is. And, um, they, um, see the need between now and 2040, we will get 38,000 more new homes in our state. Now, our Western County, if you go to the, the map and you click on Western County and what our increase is going to be between now and 2040, it's going to be 24 people. And I think, well, that's what their, their survey said. And I want that not result. I think if we only get 24 people, we're going to lose serious numbers because there's all of us, all of us are a little nearer to the future than some of you. And so we're gonna need some help. But anyway, please there, yourself, go to this website and see what they have in mind and see what they're doing. Because the seminar didn't tell you all of this either. You have to go to the website to get, uh, the full report on this A B T group. That's, that's the people who did the report. And we do have, um, Mark Lindstrom in Upper Wyoming is on the W C D A board. And they said he can contact him and he knows some things about this. But anyway, the overall growth for Brook County was 16% between now and 2040. And ours is 24. Anyway, go to the website, please, take a look at it. What they call their new movement is the Teaching Action Plan. And, and they've got some great ideas. And I think that once we get behind it and we get talking to our, our senators and our, our people representing Western County, that we might, you know, get some action here. And that, that's my report of the W C D A. None of them might have lived last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Glass? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Um, we'll go ahead and move on to Department of Energy Reports. Uh, item number one, attorney double fuse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council at the last meeting, I believe we discussed amending section 16-11.2. It's the use of engine compression brakes, jake brakes. Um, I've added that sort of location language as to where we enforce on top of the violation section. Um, I do have one amendment. I think council will discuss this. Obviously we might have more, but there is in the violation section, a comma. And it says thereafter, then comma. I would just have the comma thereafter, the comma be crossed out. That please is the council.
Cross out the thereafter?
Yep. Cross out the word thereafter?
Yes.
Oh.
And from there, once the council's read it, like, just basically any opinions on kind of the location restriction, uh, the wording on that, the fine itself? They think the fine is too strict, if it's too low?
This would be the wording of A, against where it says on any portion of U S I way 85.
I was just gonna bring that up. That, that, that was York Street?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, but yes, city limits do not start until around York Street. Uh, actually, I'm not sure if it's the next, what is it, Hall or, uh, House Street is the next place that I believe is actually where the city limits start. Highway 85 on the other side, city limits, if I recall, ends at South Summit, Old 85. So that's really the only thing we can, we can govern from, if I recall. Everything along the bypass is inside, the truck ride is inside city limits. Uh, the cross street is South Stampede and is all, yeah, South Sumner Avenue and Highway Truck Bypass is all within the city limits. We weren't going to put the signs up until we established exactly where the city limit was and then put out the city.
Do we need to have it in there someplace, the city of New, within the city limits?
I mean, we could put it in there, but we also can't enforce anything outside. You know, we couldn't enforce a engine compression brake, say, you know, over, um, Wyoming down there. Um, I could throw that in there. I could put it in there to use any vehicle engine compression brake. Um, oh wait, no person shall operate or use any vehicle engine compression brake within the corporate limits of the city.
Okay. That one.
So Greg Allen, are you just saying that any portion of U S I way 85, it doesn't really matter if I put that in there or not? Okay.
So just remove subsection eight? So subsection B would now become A?
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuq Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Have we done enough editing to go ahead and give it its first reading? Okay.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and come into the first reading of ordinance number six, series 2024. An ordinance amending section 16-11.2 of the Newcastle Town Code. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Newcastle, Western County, Wyoming. Section 16-11.2 be codified into the Newcastle, Wyoming municipal code. Reading in its entirety as follows. Section 16-11.2, use of engine compression brakes, jake brakes prohibited. No person shall operate or use any vehicle engine compression brake within the corporate limits of the city, except it shall not be a violation of this section to use any vehicle engine compression brake in the following areas. Uh, subsection A, from the crossroad of South Sumner Avenue and the U S 16 truck route to the crossroad of Stampede Street and the U S 16 truck route. Violation of this section constitutes a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of $50 for any first offense, $100 for any second offense, and for any third or subsequent offense may be punishable by a fine up to $750. Does the council entertain a motion to approve ordinance number six, series 2024, on First Street?
I make a motion to approve it.
Second. Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Uh, pass ordinance number six, series 2024 on First Street. Thank you, council. Uh, that is actually all I have, I believe. Yes, that's correct. Okay. Uh, the, the, oh, Councilman Glass, go ahead.
Mr. Counselor, uh, did you ever have an opportunity to look into that? Uh, what we thought might be a rule that the city actually can have ordinances that extend a mile beyond its present, uh, boundaries? But there used to be a law in the state of Wyoming that, that our ordinances went on a mile beyond our city limits. And I'd like to know if that's still in effect and if, if we can say something about some of the things going on in our city.
Well, I'm not aware of any state statute that states, you know, that they can go, you know, that within our jurisdiction or per your stance, you know, a month, or excuse me, a month, a mile out of, uh, the city limits. Can I look into that for you?
Please, uh, cause I, I think it's important. Cause I, I know that in my youth, that was, that was the law. And I think.
Okay.
Do you think it was? No, I just think, I hope they have one. That's all I had. Question.
Any further questions for Attorney? Thank you. Moving on to item number two, Court Treasurer Stacy Hagerty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a copy of the notice of budget amendment in your council packets. And it's just, um, request approval to go ahead and advertise for that amendment for, um, garbage fund stated last meeting. Um, we do need to amend it by about $150,000 due to the landfill quota escrow count.
Council, do we entertain a motion to approve Stacy Hagerty or Treasurer to put up the notice of amendment, uh, notice of budget amendment? Hearing?
So, no.
Wait a second. Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion?
I'd like to, okay, now we're going back to the airport board. And, and I'd like to amend this and, and open up the budget, a hearing amendment hearing to give them back. I think we've kept, and what is it, $7,000 they were asking for? But, and it was, they had proposed it and, and we ignored it. We, we decided not to give them $7,000.
Oh, I remember this being a hangup at the, uh, you brought all that nice material for us to be on the importance of airports.
And that's why I brought it, cause I thought at that meeting that we could go ahead and amend the budget and get those people their money for additional funds for the year. And I was like, if, if we're gonna have an amendment hearing, can we please have an amendment to go ahead and, and answer the airport's request for funding this year? And we didn't answer it.
So this budget amendment is for the 24, 25 fiscal year?
Yeah.
And what you're discussing would be for next fiscal year? Would it be appropriate to see where we're at towards the end of next year before we do that?
When they made their request, what budget does that form?
For, for the moment, we just adopt.
25, 26? So that's, that would be a. So we'd have them do that, that way. Thank you.
My next item is, um, my deputy clerk Amber Reddick.
We have a, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, so we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries.
Sorry. Sorry for jumping to that. Um, my next item is Deputy Clerk Amber Reddick has completed her probationary period. And they request a penalty sent for hour raise and her being given permanent status and taken off probation.
Perfect. We have a motion.
Two moves, as I guess.
We have a motion and a second to approve a raise for Amber Reddick and, uh, completion of her probationary period and to put her on permanent status. Uh, do we need to vacate that or anything? Effective today? Okay, effective today. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries Amber Reddick's permanent status and rating.
Thank you. My last item, I just wanted to let the council know that you received the Wyoming Community Gas Community Distribution check for $6,006.39. The council had previously approved to split those funds between the veteran memorial fund and the fire department.
Does anybody have any questions for Court Treasurer Stacy Hagerty?
I, I can't handle. In the, in this new, in the claim today, there's a check going out to the, um, new, um, people with the landfill. Okay? And do we, or is it, would it be difficult for us to come up with a comparison of what we're paying every two weeks or if that check goes up once a month? Or does it go out every two weeks?
Once a month.
Once a month? Okay, so that, uh, are we somewhere close to where we, what we spent before? We had those people and what it cost the city before? Is there some comparison we could make with that?
What type of a time period do you want to look at? Cause yeah, we have like wage sheets that we would have had from when the city ran the land.
Uh, and what it costs us then and what it costs us now. Uh, then being what? Two years ago and no further and, and then what it's coming up, who caused it?
I can do it all.
I'd like to know if that works.
Any further questions? Yes, hold on.
There's a question, but just with the information that I've to Stacy today. Been having email issues again with the city in email. This is the second time. I spent over an hour on the phone with their tech support today. Two hours, a little over two and a half hours almost, a month ago with them. I had two guys on the phone with me that day and they could not figure out what was going on. They went through a whole bunch of stuff and they finally texted. Today, when he went through and deleted the account, he added the account, something like the authenticator and a duo, I'm getting the duo and the authenticator and it's left me, it's accepted and it will not recognize any. So I'm done with the city. I'm just leaving because this is not working and I'm not spending my time on the phone with techs.
I don't ever close out. So you always, 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 I always close when I read it, like in my email. I close it down.
I have two other outlet accounts, right? Never had any problems with one account. This one I use for working has the duo authenticator to.
So because I never closed, ever told me, I, I don't have to have that up any day. So I can just get right in.
On my, on my phone, I don't close that particular app out. But Friday, I got your email, but I could not open it because it would not recognize my, um, password. And it would not take my password through the whole weekend. So I talked to tech support this afternoon and he worked diligently trying to go through it. And he tried everything again. Uh, he couldn't. He said, I'm baffled. I'm not sure what's going on. So, you know, use my previous email or my firefighter email to send me an notification because I won't get anything else through that. It's not hard to.
The, the idea behind having governmental email accounts, you understand, but like, I guess if you're using your firemen, you know, it's basically governmental email just to provide us a buffer of protection here, just in case there was any litigation they had to seize.
I understand that.
So, so I, I understand your frustration too. Right? I didn't know anybody was suffering.
That was one thing when I got on the council, that was one agreement I made with my company that if I use my company email, all my stuff usually goes into a specific folder for open record.
If they needed to do a search or seizure.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I understand your frustration or sorry that's happened. And it's bad to get attacked, gotta go. I don't really know what's going on.
I had two guys on the last one and they were frustrated. And the two guys talking about each other on conference call.
You had to listen to that too.
Yeah. And, well, I can work through quite a bit of texting and hearing and then trying, them doing the same thing I'm doing, and they're not getting anywhere with it.
I took my phone and went to the, now the camera.
I took my computer and she went too.
Do we have any other comments or questions for, for Treasurer Stacy Hagerty? Hearing none. Move on to, um, item number three, Call it work supervisor Greg Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first item, I drafted a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program for the South Sumner Avenue pathway engineering portion of the project. I would recommend that council, our mayor, to sign the applications in the head process.
So we need to read, uh, resolution number four, series 2025. Uh, resolution authorizing the submission of an application for federal funding through the Transportation Alternative Program administered by the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the city of Newcastle for the purpose of South Sumner Avenue Pathway Engineering Project. Witnessed at. Whereas CAP requires that federal funding criteria be met and the City of Newcastle agrees to ensure satisfaction of all requirements. Whereas the City of Newcastle acknowledges that if funded, the CAP project shall be completed prior to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. Whereas the governing body of the City of Newcastle agrees to set aside a minimum of one hundred thousand as a line item in the budget for the required nine and fifty-one hundredths percent. Body of the City of Newcastle agrees to set aside a minimum of one hundred thousand as a line item in the budget for the required nine and fifty-one hundredths percent of local cash match on the project. Whereas the governing body of the City of Newcastle acknowledges CAP is funded on a reimbursement basis and all invoices must be one hundred percent paid by the City of Newcastle prior to reimbursement through CAP, ninety point four nine percent federal reimbursement. The City of Newcastle acknowledges that failure to comply with this requirement may result in cancellation of the award and payment by the City of Newcastle of all funds reimbursed. Now, therefore, be resolved by the governing body of the City of Newcastle that a funding application requesting one hundred thousand in federal CAP funding be submitted to the Wyoming Department of Transportation, CAP for continued consideration to assist in funding for the City of Newcastle project. We have further resolved that Greg Stumpf is hereby designated as a project administrator of the City of Newcastle to act on behalf of the governing body on all matters relating to this funding application. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number Four Series Twenty Twenty Five as read? Second. Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
I've got a question though. So we're gonna, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on doing this project and then you're gonna send them the bills and then pay us back?
Oh, nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Everything, nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Ten percent or something.
And as far as the hundred thousand dollars, we have to have a line item in our budget for this project, which we are going to do.
Yeah, we know, we got that, okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes, we pass Resolution Number Four Series Twenty Twenty Five.
Thank you, council. My next item, after visiting with the personnel committee about a person I visited with by this grant loan specialist position several months ago, I would request to offer conditional employment to Beth Blackwell for the grant loan specialist position at thirty-nine dollars per hour salary. Beth has extensive background in grant management, grant loan management. She's actually, she was actually working for OSLI who part of her job was managing the SRF grants, SRF loans, MRG grants, as well as all the ARB grants were making. I couldn't tell you many thousands of applications she's probably written. She was with OSLI for twelve years and has very extensive knowledge about this.
I've worked with Beth Blackwell as well professionally and this is going to be huge for the, for the City of Newcastle if we pass this. She's a, she's just fantastic. She's super sharp and she knows where to find all the money so that we can get our projects done in places that other people aren't going to know where to look. So I, I think this is a really big thing for the City of Newcastle if we pass it. So with that, we entertain a motion to approve the city item, Beth Blackwell at the parameters, the public work supervisor of the state. We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
When I first heard about this person that was going to be available to us, I said right away that we need to try everything, that this person, she's got the insight, it's great to, what we needed, a grant is a top priority for us, that we don't have money for a grant.
She's not going to be here, so she'll be working.
Probably. She's the one that read the grants, been able to prove and knows what needs to be in those grants to be on the first level.
She lives in Elton?
What's that?
Oh, she was in Chi-.
Oh, Chi-.
Eighty-one thousand.
We just pay the thirty-nine dollars an hour as she's working on a particular?
What we, what I had visited with her about was salary. We based her salary on the wage range that the state has for grant loan manager for office of state lands and investment. We did budget for this money, we did budget for this, so it is part of our current budget. I think two thousand eighty hours a year, we're going to keep her running this. One, notice a funding opportunity that I'm looking at right now for the Radio Street, Sheridan Street, street portion of the project is three hundred and twelve pages long. The application is, I don't know how many pages that I have, I forgot how many. But a federal nofo can be two hundred plus pages easy. There's a lot of research goes into this and then there's the application. For me, granted Beth is going to knock it out a lot faster than I did, but each SRF application I submit already took me about five hundred hours of issue. So by the time we get done with the application processes and managing CAP program requests and things like that, I think she'll stay plenty busy.
This is really huge. Is there any?
Can I just get some clarification? So we're talking thirty-nine dollars an hour salary, like an eighty-hour pay period. Is there any probation or?
Yeah, with probation.
Beth.
Yes, it's full-time positions. Prohibition.
Do we need to restate the motion to include?
Yeah, someone on the staff language.
Who made the motion?
I did. You made the motion, I said yes.
Uh, do you want to rebrand your motion to include some of the items here?
A one-year probationary period and benefits. Can you just put it full-time position? Add that to my original motion.
Okay.
And I think, um.
That's not really clean, do we need to make it clean?
Yeah, I mean.
You just do it. I amend my motion to add a one-year probationary period and add thirty-nine dollars an hour or something, that was, excuse me, a salary which amounts to thirty-nine dollars an hour. What was the figure for yearly?
Eighty.
Eighty-one thousand. And your probation period starting when?
Probably effective July the fourteenth.
You're getting all that.
July the fourteenth?
So, she's got it all down though.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded, already backed the motion. The motion is to offer Beth Blackwell thirty-nine dollars an hour or equating to eighty-one thousand dollars per year with one-year probation and benefits starting July fourteenth. Is there any discussion?
Is there any, okay, we're hiring this person to be salary but at the City of Newcastle, is there any assurance that she's going to work just for the City of Newcastle or can she work for ten other people and make eight hundred and ten dollars a year?
We did visit about that, she was wondering about it. Problem is, we, if we have competing bids or competing with grant, one of the stipulations was that, yes, she can make extra money if she wants, working outside of the normal hours that she would work for us. But if, if it come down to competing bid, competing with grants, we would have preference over contracted or part-time employment with another kind of a no place. I think Beth thinks that we can't keep her busy enough and probably at first we, it'll be tough for a little while, probably a couple of weeks, a month, until you get a list of all of her projects and she starts working for everything.
I think you could keep her busy by searching and giving us orders to what we could give money.
Yeah, well, this guy's been, I just don't have the time to do it.
No, I mean, she could, you just ask her, your first duty is to give, to give what we can give money and keep her busy doing that. I'm not pleased with the idea that she can work for other people and we pay her eighty-one thousand dollars a year. Now that, that's a lot of money.
Yes, it is, but if we can get enough grants.
She can pay for it. Well, I'm sure that she will, yes. That's not the question.
Okay.
What was your, what was your question?
Is it, is she going to solely work for the City of Newcastle being under our salary? And the answer is no. She can work for other people.
We do allow moonlight. In a policy manual, we do allow moonlight. So to restrict, if it's not conflict with the city, supervisors will make that decision.
So it is a, it is a concern. I mean, it would be unfortunate if she was moonlighting for another community or something and then they ended up scoring a grant that'd be all right. But it's just, this is a new position, it's something that we're just gonna have to kind of feel out. You don't run into professionals like Kirby and Kirk.
I agree, this is top notch and I'm not suggesting we don't, I'm just suggesting.
Yeah, it is definitely a concern, but we'll just have to kind of see how, how we feel this out. So, but I know Beth Blackwell, this is going to be pretty huge for us, so I'm really excited about this. Does anybody else have any further discussion? Any further discussion? No? Hearing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, what we found in Beth Blackwell. So this is great.
I think it's good that you blow it off, not, not only myself, but engineer Harper as well, so. Next item, we had some vandalism over the weekend at the East Sports Complex. We were forced to close the bathrooms until we could replace at least one toilet, but the rest haven't seen. Looks like they're throwing firecrackers in toilets, crack, force them.
I don't think it was this morning.
It was, must have been night of fireworks or something, we don't know what, when it was. But they had a fire pit in the parking lot, it was still smoldering this morning. There were beer cans all over the place. There were beer cans and boxes and everything else in the garbage. It was just a mess. So if anybody asks why the bathrooms deal concession are closed until we can get any toilets, we have to leave it closed. Luckily, baseball's over. The next item, EPA requires us to collect what they call unregulated contaminant monitoring or do, do unregulated contaminant monitoring. This year, we were selected for PFAS, PFOA, lithium and five dozen, two dozen other types of samples. This did not cost us anything but our time, EPA pays for it since we're a small system. We did get the results back from this time. PFAS, PFOA and lithium, well, everything was below the maximum recorded limit, which isn't parts per trillion. So we had a zero or too low for them to even account for in all fireballs. We have to resample again in October, we'll see what those come up with, but I'm confident we'll be okay. This one actually really concerned me because if, if they decided to, if they come over high, over the height, twenty thirty-one, we would have to have a way to treat for this. So luckily we don't, we don't have any right now.
I think that's a novel idea and I guess I was encouraged just by Senator Driscoll's bill that moves this conversation forward. And let's hear some of those ideas. Instead of just saying, oh, one man, one vote, nothing we can do to help you, Weston County. Finally, it, it seems like the issue's been forced a little bit and I'm encouraged by that at least.
I'm very encouraged by that and I'm encouraged by the fact that the commissioners haven't pulled that resolution that created the constitutional senator and representative for Weston County. I think that that, I think that them not backtracking helps a lot and solidifies that it's not just this handful of people that want Weston County to be represented. And I think that the conversation is, is going to be really good and I think there's going to be a lot of ideas thrown around.
My next item is for information, WELL5. We were early monitoring for WELL5 for several different things. We did receive a letter reducing our monitoring factor to the annual triangular lighting. We received a report about water, mystery water near Denner's Market. Where it's surfacing, we do not have water, unless there is an old abandoned surface, if you're looking at that. But actually, the water's coming up higher up into the parking lot of Denner's. We don't look to that. This one's going to deck, you'll see standing water between them and the old line. Just don't even know where to start with this one. We have a pretty bad sewer on Cambria Street. There's a manhole in amusement, it's a little brick manhole. It's twenty feet, four inches deep. And we couldn't get our backdrop into it. The manhole actually started eroding and the bricks started falling in and that's what bled off the sewer. We got our, we got our rotor hose stuck. It was about a six-day process to get this thing cleaned out and flowing. In the meantime, we had to relay them to another manhole. It's one of the sewers that we're probably going to get sooner than later to our capital crews because we cannot access it. It's in amusement, they built a building in front of the manhole and we're only have about five feet of room to go through to it. So it's going to be a deal. We did receive the new skid steer. We greatly appreciate it because we were running around without either skid steer for a while, so. I presented the mayor with the agreement for the twenty twenty-five program project with our, I would recommend the council allow the mayor to sign the agreement and the notice to proceed when we receive that in your future.
This is a council entertain a motion to approve the agreement so we can move forward with our construction project.
I received the information today about three hours. So anyway, I got it to Stacy and the mayor to review. Here's, here's reviewed it. I've reviewed it. Chuck's reviewed it.
If you want, you can pass this around and we can all look at it.
We didn't, just, just kind of give us the, what, what's it do?
It's just the acceptance of the bid.
Oh, there'll be.
We need to just move forward with the phase two, or one and phase two.
It's the contract between us and the contractor for the project.
To do what?
To do the twenty twenty-five improvements project, the water sewer main at Delaware and York.
Okay.
And the water sewer main and the street at, uh, North Norright and East Waltham.
I moved that we approved this agreement with hot air to do the twenty twenty-five with, approve this project.
Your motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
What's the total of the grant for hot air?
Oh, that was.
Two million.
One hundred thousand, one hundred sixty-four thousand and.
Two million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I just like to know what the money is.
We do have the money. We have a million dollar grant, a million dollar loan. We'll have to come up with the hundred and sixteen thousand ourselves. We already have money, money questions for this.
Thank you. So we're on track with the, uh, um, the level one assessment and the capital improvements projects that, that were listed through twenty thirty-two?
Uh, yes, this one will be half a year behind because of the S R certification taking so long to be approved. And some other approval, uh, through WWDC. Um, but yes, we're, we're still on track.
Mark enough, uh, projects that we got, um, identified through that process. So it's good to be on schedule and actually have a plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion passes. Also the agreement.
Thank you. Uh, my next item for information, the new lift station at Stuff Avenue for gradation is scheduled to be delivered July, the week of July twenty-first. So hopefully by August first, we'll have a new lift station up and running. So. That's another huge, huge project that we want to get done sooner than there. Um, to follow up with the question about the Newcastle football water. I talked with Adam Hartman, the superintendent. He gave me the information for, uh, for the practice field and the football field. It's estimated they use one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand gallons, four hundred and ninety million, one million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety gallons uh, per month for the month of July and August. The months of June, May, June, September, they would use nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, or forty-five gallons per month. Their total monthly cost for the July and August estimated to be two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars based on their current bulk grade we have with the, with the agreement. Um, with July and August both, that would be five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. For May, June, September, it would be four thousand sixty-five dollars collectively for those three months.
On your standard, we charge them?
Yes. If, this is just information for the council.
Right, right.
Request to come up with this. Several months estimated to be nine thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. For the football field and practice field.
Anything in the information the governor Greg?
And I can send this out to everybody after I find out, so. The meth chloride for gravel roads, um, I'm trying to get ahold of Super Denny Jimm, asking about the Weston County Road Bridge. To get some information about what they use. We would want to coordinate with whoever they're using to get our projects in line or we can take the backup and split it. Split the stuff, so. My final thing I was, I'd like to request, um, I am going to volunteer to do it. With the day of the drags toward the drag race, we've got a classic car event. I would like to use the water truck and a skid steer with the broom in conjunction with the drags. They need water on the track at the beginning. And if they have an oil spill or something like that, we have to sweep the road into process. When the person be running it, they'll be.
Does the council entertain a motion to, uh, loan Public Works Supervisor a drag stump? Can the water truck and skip loader to the, uh, the, uh, plastic drags event? Yeah, motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I know that these people are raising quite a bit of money. Could we address Ms. Sandra Martin and see that we could get you reimbursed? If she makes that much money ahead.
I'm already volunteering for the event, so I'll be there.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. You get them loaned out.
Thank you very much. Uh, that's all I have.
Does anybody have any further questions for Public Works Supervisor?
I have one. How much does it cost us, the city, to clean up after the open container street things?
Um, I'll have it for you next week. We didn't get a chance to finish our workers. We did do, we have been doing workers and all professional ones. So I can tell you the man hours and, and so on and so forth.
I'm gonna say twenty dollars isn't enough to cover all the cleanup.
That's a good idea. That's a really good idea.
Um, I need to say until I, I get the rest of the hours in, you can have a report ready for all, for the farmer's market, the hospital, the, the stuff in the van, I guess.
Oh, is there, um?
I just want to say that I drove down these streets and they looked very clean.
Very, very.
Looked nice.
It was.
Worked out a lot better.
Stuff in the garbage cans, but it looked picked up and nice. And I think everything went very well and I want to thank you all.
Yeah, the plan went quick. We were down by two. You're really back into the show.
I didn't hear any big.
Nothing to go with your name?
I was thinking.
Was there, uh, any update on the Cedar Street signs?
They're on order.
Still on order?
We had to put some other signs on the rush before it closed, so those got worked back. Okay, yeah, no, they're on.
You'll, you'll let, you'll let me know when they get it and get it all?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Very good. Uh, two, two things. Did you, um, hear from Wadaw about the hole for the rear on?
It's next on my agenda.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna keep bugging you, you know that.
Uh, no, I, it's.
Oh, you're still talking to us about that?
Um.
I'll shut up?
No, no. That is, uh, I have to completely interrupt.
Okay, I got one other question. With, this isn't a rush order, but we're talking about a pocket park down there where, where, and then where, and somebody mentioned bathrooms and I haven't got a clue where it would cost to put a bathroom in there. Could you give us a ballpark at least?
It would be very, it would be very similar to the one we're doing at Dow Park. So it's got men's and women's both and prepackaged building. The only bad part is I, it would be more than this. How much I don't know because we would want to have this four season rather than two season a little bit. The two season building's a hundred and twenty thousand, estimate it comes. We have about ten thousand dollars in underground plumbing work and such to.
Okay, so if we got the ten thousand dollars, do we have to pay for that? Then we could get somebody volunteer, then we could get a floor court and then build a house and get a volunteer, then we wouldn't have to spend that kind of money.
If we built one, um, I would recommend we go with either poured concrete or.
Block?
Block.
Yeah.
They're easier to maintain, um, if there's a mess made in them and there will be, I guarantee it. If we take the tar and those in there.
It's like a prison, kind of built.
Yes. I mean, the ones we're, we're specing out now are all stainless steel sinks, stainless steel toilets, automatic flushers, automatic end sinks because people.
People do bad things, yeah.
Are they, are they fireworks proof?
Well, we haven't had one blown up yet. And that's where the problem with baseball fields, we are going back to stainless steel.
A hundred and twenty dollars.
Any further questions for Public Works Supervisor? Okay, moving on to item number four. Thanks, Greg. Uh, Police Chief Eric Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start out with our calls for service, uh, from June sixteenth to today. Newcastle Police Department, two hundred and eighty-nine. Weston County Sheriff's Office, two hundred and eleven. Upton Police Department, they did finally get a chief. Uh, they were thirty-five. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, thirteen. Weston County Fire Protection District, eight. Upton Volunteer Fire Department, five. Newcastle Ambulance, thirty-three. Uh, the one thing I have been kind of trying to keep track of because the councilman once asked me to break this down several months back. If you just look at the calls that originated within the city levels of Newcastle, there's twenty-three, but eight of those were ambulance transfers from the hospital, so. If you just look at the calls that originated within the city levels of Newcastle, there's twenty-three, but eight of those were ambulance transfers from the hospital, so. That could be somebody that had gone to the hospital on their own or were brought in from out of town and then transferred out, so. I tried to put a little note in there about, um, calls that didn't necessarily originate from within the city. At residence or anything like that. Uh, and Weston County had ten EMS calls and Upton, Ossage, and Custer were zero. Upton ambulance was eleven. And the next item was, we only received one bid for the patrol vehicles. It was from, uh, John Jones. Police pursuit vehicles, the, the folks that gave us the preliminary bid. They only have one of the V-six model vehicles available. It's delivered here, all doc fees and all of that included for sixty-three, four, thirty-two, fifty. He did give me a quote on a second vehicle, but it, the difference being it's the V-eight model instead of the V-six. Uh, it's just shy of three thousand dollars more. He said he can order a two thousand twenty-six model, but it would be about six thousand dollars more than the, than the two thousand twenty-three V-six. He said driving down the road or looking inside of them, they would all look the same. And I am kind of trying to make everything look the same as much as I can anyways. Uh, but they would just have a V-eight instead of a V-six, but it is, it is a little more money. Grand total for that would be a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven. Uh, so they did provide, um, the bid for the V-six model and we've been, uh, between Delwin and Chuck and I, we've been playing phone betting back and forth, trying to get the logistics of all this figured out. Where they've, they've, uh, provided us a bid, but, uh, they didn't have two vehicles that met the, met the parameters that we set for, so I don't know how we proceed from that. Probably should have involved grade in the situation. He probably could have explained it to me in five minutes. But at any rate, I would, I would at least request the council authorize Mayor Owens to sign the, um, bid for the one vehicle, at least.
Mr. Mayor, from a, one thing we always put in our bids, um, is our approved equal. If the engine's a V-six and we so choose to allow a V-eight, then it's a moot point.
So if the, uh, council approves me to sign the, uh, bid form for the approved equal, we could get more cars.
Yeah.
Um, they request to sign a notice to award. Mayor, can you motion to approve the mayor to sign a notice to award for the first car that met the parameters and then the approved equal? Or do we have a motion to approve for just the one car?
Well, we started out, we were gonna buy two cars and then we can buy these two cars, right? But I, I moved that we approved the, the mayor to sign the bids for these two cars that are listed here and that they're both, they're kind of equal anyway. And, uh, and this is going back to the, the, your budget in the before time. This is.
Yes, I did have to send me invoices, uh,
Say.
On the thirtieth of June, so I, I think.
Very good. Well, I moved we approved the mayor to sign and buy these two cars for the thirtieth of June. This.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I guess the one last thing I'd ask, was there any other issues that you perceive with that whole process?
The only thing that, uh, I was under the impression that it was just for one vehicle. That's why I was having issues with it.
So I, I think the language in the bid did say one vehicle to be bid.
We know this put a form here with us.
Don't know if I have the. Don't think I have the document outlining the specifications. I have it in email though.
So when he gave you a, that sort of second buy offer, was that, he gave you this original bid for the one vehicle, right?
Correct.
I mean, would there be anything stopping us from bidding for a second vehicle? And, you know, put in there the parameters of what it would be, just to check our boxes on that?
The reason.
I say that is, is because I, I get what he's, you know, he's basically like, well, I have this other vehicle and it, you know, but it's what it is. It's basically what we were looking for, but. When we do say one vehicle versus two. And we do say one vehicle versus two.
I guess, yeah, I don't think there's anything that would stop us from doing that. The only thing is, we would probably have to pay for it out of the, uh, twenty-six fiscal year budget in lieu of the twenty-five. Which frankly, that probably wouldn't be an issue anyways.
Yeah, I, frankly, I just don't want to get in the city to get in trouble with the advertisement portion of that.
So I should amend my motion just to one car?
Yes, I think that would probably be prudent.
No, I amend my motion to approve the, uh, vehicle, uh, the six-cylinder vehicle, the Wrangler, that had been bid.
Okay, we have an amended motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. No, we're gonna get another.
Thank you, council. I really appreciate it. I guess with that, should I go ahead and bid or redo the bid, even though we would have to pay for it out of the twenty-six fiscal year budget?
Well, you got room in your budget, chief.
Well, right now I've got lots of it, but in eight months, I, I don't know. I, I would project yes, um, but I guess, kind of what I'm asking is what would be the, what would be the procedure or availability of funds if we were to have to amend to cover that down the road? Would that be a difficult thing to do, or would we have money somewhere to cover that potentially, if that did become an issue?
We would have to do just like we're doing for the garbage fund if it came to the next, to the end of next year. Unless, would it be appropriate if they would still invoice us for last fiscal year? Is that a problem of them?
So, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify here. He just added that on, said he could do that if he wanted to, with the second vehicle?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, and then we have the bid form, which the only thing that we can sign is the one vehicle, right? I think that's all he had, and then he sent in, well, I could throw in this other vehicle or whatever it is, right?
Right.
Um, I mean, you could put that invoice in there, but I still think the council has to make a motion to, you know, advertise it and then, um, you know, move forward with that. Because I, and I know that I'm overcomplicating the plot here, but, um, that's the way the state statute reads.
We can always just relook at things closer to next fiscal year or towards the end, and then we can amend if we do have to.
So would the council approve, um, a motion to advertise for a second vehicle? Maybe put the deadline out there a little bit further.
I don't know. Chief, I'll ask, um, does the council entertain a motion to, uh, submit a bid for the other car, uh, for this fiscal year's budget?
I'm going to submit advertising for a second for the...
Advertising. Do we have a second or an option?
Second.
Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion?
So do you have people for these cars? Not well, but we do have drivers that are starting to cause us troubles too, so...
Is this motion gonna cost us six thousand more dollars than the, the car we got here?
It depends on how we, uh, make the bid. If we go for another V-six, um, that's a twenty-five, it shouldn't. If we go with the V-eight, or, sorry, if we go with a V-eight, that is a twenty-five, it would cost us what we have here in front of us. If we go with a V-six, that's a two thousand twenty-six model.
What do you want to do?
I just assume buy the cheaper of the two. I mean, you're not, you're getting a new vehicle either way, so if we can get a twenty-five year model and save some money, I would rather do it that way. And the one that just got approved is a twenty-three, twenty-six, or a twenty-five? With that particular outcome, the bid that doesn't have any more twenties left, and if they order anymore, they're gonna be twenty-six year models, so it'll be another six thousand dollars more. I guess they've gone up that much, which is crazy.
That's ten percent rate, unless, unless that even inflation.
Unless there's somebody out there that has more of them.
Yeah, remember, Tom, that the auto workers got twenty-five percent rates.
Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. You gonna give another?
Thank you. Uh, just a quick note, the Fourth of July holiday and the old school reunion both went pretty well. Like I said, nothing out of the ordinary. A couple of arrests, only one of which I attribute to the old school reunion, I think.
Class of sixty-nine, yes.
And we are working on preparing for the classic summer drag event. We have a meeting this week with all the first responder agencies to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row as far as emergency detours and things like that. And we have a communications plan set up and have our ducks in a row as much as possible before that comes here, so... It'll probably be a pretty busy next couple of weeks, but, well, it'll probably be a pretty busy next couple of months, I guess, now that I think about it. Hopefully things will taper off after that a little bit. And that's all I have.
Does anybody have any further questions for Chief?
This is a really nicely thought of, uh, but there's one thing missing.
What's that?
Arrests.
Arrests? You want that in there?
Why not?
Okay. I can do that.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Chief.
You bet.
Uh, moving on to claims against the city dated July seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Your honor, I vote that we pay our bills.
Is there a second? We have a motion properly seconded to, is claimed against the city. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries or no paper bills? The council will be entertain a motion to go into executive session. A third being law and statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, A triple I proposed litigation. I'm going to go to review. We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries for an executive session at, what time it is? Nine forty-two. Uh, the public welcome the state will be in the, at the grand chamber and will be exited to, uh, uh, make our decision.
This is dumb.
Focus. Okay, uh... Yeah, we exited and entered into regular session at ten oh six. And there's no public left to hear us, but council, do we entertain a motion to address the issues addressed in, uh, in our executive session?
Mayor, make a motion to move that we amend the Cambria Improvement District water contract to give them a credit for the decreases to be observed, to conform to the intent of the contract and for the credit to be applied to a twelve-month period.
Second.
So we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. Do we have a motion to address the, uh, other contract that...
Sunset, we do sunset. So we make a motion that we amend the Sunset Ranch Water District contract to give a credit for the decreases to be observed and to conform with the intent of the contract and for credit to be applied to a twelve-month period.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Do we entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting? Is there a second? We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. Uh, thanks.
That wasn't funny.
What, what time?
Uh, at ten oh nine.
Did you just nay a...